Meeting is called to order. Let's all stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Corey, can you read the statement of certification to the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to Sunsign Law.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Here.
Mr. Melham. Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Mr. Conti. Mr. Vanda.
Here.
Mr. Bold.
Here.
Mr. Corvo. Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Warne.
Here.
Ms. Rico.
Here.
Ms. Novarado. Mr. Ganyan.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo. I believe he's here.
He's coming out.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
And Ms. De Vito.
Here.
Can I have a motion for the approval of a minute of the November 4th, 2019 special meeting? And a November 14th, 2019 record meeting? Make a motion. Please call a roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bold.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Warne.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
And Mr. Ganyan.
Yes. The approval of the 2020 calendar, I guess it's just the second Thursday of every month. See no problems with that. Old resolutions in business to be memorialized. We have PB 2907, 608 Mill Street, Franklin Manor Phase Two. It's Mill Street Development Herbal Renewal, 24 two-bedroom application. Please call them individually. Please call a roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Warne.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
And Mr. Ganyan.
Yes. Next, we have PB 2504. Give me for Mr. Bold.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bold. Oh, no, he didn't do it on the original one, so.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
All right. Very good. PB 2504 plus A, 91 Terry Street, Terry lots, lots 8902, lots 1, 10, and 11. It's a 115-unit multi-family building. Please call a roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bold.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Warne.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
And Mr. Ganyan.
Yes.
The next two is PB 2707, 212-216 Belville Avenue, and PB 2808, 675 Main Street. They're both going to be carried to the January 9th meeting to be memorialized. Addergements, we have PB 2904, 30 Washington Avenue, G and R Masons Makes Me Work LLC is adjourned, and we also have Par 2, 705, 757 Main Street, Bellville Industrial Center, opposing attorney, 21 Associates of Bellville. The birth, both adjourned with no further announcements.
No further notices, and if anyone in the audience is here for any of those applications, you can come back at the next meeting date that we adjourned.
Applications before the board, we have PB 2916, 651 Mill Street, block 1605, lot 10, RL Premier Homes LLC. Applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to widen and lengthen an existing driveway and demolish an existing detached garage.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Michael Paramali, will affirm again, Gashon McMacko, Block 24, Union Avenue in Bellville. I'm here tonight on behalf of Raymond Schaefer, as managing member of RL Premium Homes LLC. The applicant is here tonight against a preliminary and final major site plan approval along with two associated bulk variances in order to demolish an existing detached garage and to extend and expand the existing asphalt driveway at 651 Mill Street, otherwise known as block 1605, lot 10 on the Bellville tax map. Subject property is located in an RV zone and is used as a three-family dwelling. It will continue to be used as a three-family dwelling, which is a permitted use in the zone. In addition to preliminary and final site plan approval, in order to extend the driveway as proposed, the applicant will require two bulk variances. First, the applicant is seeking a seer bulk variance for minimum distance between a driveway and a side lot line, where a 0.5-foot setback, I'm sorry, where a five-foot setback is required pursuant to Bellville Zone Ordinance 23-6.7A, and a zero-foot setback is proposed. Also, a seer bulk variance is requested for maximum driveway width, where a maximum driveway width of 16 feet is permitted pursuant to Bellville Zone Ordinance 23-6.7A, and a driveway 29 feet in width at its maximum extent is proposed. I intend to call two witnesses in support of this application this evening. The first, Mr. Raymond Schaefer, property owner, will testify as to his ownership of the property and what he intends to do with the driveway and demolishing the existing detached garage. I then have architect William Figdor who will testify regarding the plan he prepared to expand the driveway and also the variances needed in connection with this application. So, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I will call my first witness, Mr. Raymond Schaefer.
Please proceed.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes.
Thank you, please state your name and spell your last name.
Raymond Schaefer, S like Sam, H A double F like Frank, E R.
Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, firstly, I follow that you're mispronouncing your name. I tend to do that. I think you were followed up. Mr. Schaefer, you're currently the owner of 651 Mill Street?
Yes.
And how long have you owned 651 Mill Street?
Since December 19th last year.
And would you describe the current condition of the property?
It's in the middle of a total gut renovation.
So, the property, when you took ownership, was in pretty bad shape?
Yes.
And would you say you're pretty much gutting and remodeling all three dwelling units?
Yes, probably somewhere between 60, 75% of the interior framing has been redone.
That's great. And you filed a variance application to this board for an expansion of the existing driveway. What is the benefit to expanding the driveway over its existing condition?
If it's expanded to the length and width that I'm requesting, it will give opportunity for each tenant to have their own parking lane. Therefore, no tenant will be blocking another. My own experience, I live and own a two-family in Nutley, and the tenant, and I get along very well, but several times a week, we're always coordinating what car is in first or second. It's not just one family blocking the other, it's which individual car has to be out in the morning first or second or whatever. And while we cooperate well, it's still a bit of a hassle, and I honestly can't imagine throwing a third family into that mix.
So, this would alleviate that concern for tenants of your property?
Correct, it would make it much easier for them.
Now, with regard to the detached garage and the rear-lane intent to demolish, what is the condition of that garage?
It's in poor condition. When I first bought, I just addressed it up some, I painted it and put aluminum trim around it, so it would look a little bit better, but the roof sheathing is in poor condition. It's built on a slab without any foundation. About 25% of the slab is cracked and has sunk. Back corner, when it rains, gets water and over time, some muddy mud has gotten into that back corner as well.
So, if you were to keep the garage, it would require substantial repair to get it into order?
Yes, and yes, and right now, it's more like an oversized, somewhat useless shit.
Mr. Schaefer, who's responsible for the maintenance of the property, the plans you think so removal?
Yeah, I'd be responsible for it.
And once the property is rented out, you would still remain responsible for it?
Yes.
Now, with regard to extending the driveway from moving to detached garage, would this have any benefit to you in helping you maintain the property?
The back end of the garage, I mean, back end of the driveway, if the garage isn't there, right now, the garage is really blocking that whole back section of the property. If that's gone, we could actually remove this note to the backyard in that area.
So, while the plan does not show any lighting or landscaping improvements, the letter of denial issued by Bellville Zone Ordinance, Frank Di Lorenzo did ask, and we'd like to explain that to the board. So, what lighting improvements are proposed for this area?
I've already discussed with the electrician that four lights would be installed on the outside of the driveway side, floodlights. As far as the landscaping, once the lawn is put in order, also would like to have bushes from the front, the side of the front steps to the left corner of the front of the house.
Now, just to return to the lighting briefly, you said floodlighting. Now, would this be motion-activated lighting or would they be constantly on?
I would propose a motion.
Motion-activated, yes. Great. And with regard to drainage improvements on the property, what drainage improvements have you already made or do you propose, and how would the drainage work with your driveway?
The property itself, from the back line to the front, actually slopes to the street, so that would certainly help with the drainage. Just coordinate with the person who does the paving, just slope it in such a way that it doesn't go to the property, the neighbor's property, or of course, to my own house.
And now, in the rear of the property, the plan shows a French drain system. Has that already been installed or will that be installed?
It has been installed. The back section of the house is one-story, and it was a bedroom and a bath, which were in very bad condition. The roof was two-by-four framing on 32-inch centers, so that sagged quite badly. Then, we discovered that there was actually no foundation as well, so we took that whole back section off. There's now a new foundation with crawl space, and around that, on the outside, is a French drain system with a dry well, which is about eight foot away from the foundation.
Now, with regard to your neighbors, have you discussed this with your neighbors on either side, what you propose to do?
I've had the chance to discuss all the various changes that are going on with both neighbors on either side.
And no one's voiced any concerns?
They haven't said anything to me personally.
And have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Would you like me to call my next, or would you like the board to ask any questions?
Does anybody have any questions of the owner, of the witness?
How many lights did you say you were going to put in the driveway?
I figured about four.
Four?
Mm-hmm. One on the back section, one on the room that projects, and then two on the main section of the house.
Okay.
Did you say something more? How tall did you say that the fences were in the back? You didn't say that. Like the rear yard fences, I'm sorry, the back, the rear side?
I guess it's probably six foot. I knew they were when I bought the house, yeah.
And this is going to require a bigger curb cut?
No.
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 Curb cut?
Because the opening right now is already 16 feet, so if you see on the plan, we kind of like bevel it down to that, to that entrance.
I like that, they like to like that. Yeah, I'll lose any more sleep, all right. That's good.
Does anybody in the audience have a question of this witness? Now, you can proceed.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call our architect, William Figdor. Mr. Chairman, I'd briefly take a moment to qualify him as an expert in the field of architecture. I'll try to.
Yes, please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes.
If you please state your name and spell your last name.
William Figdor, F I G D O R.
Thank you.
Mr. Figdor, what is your business address?
53 South Mountain Avenue, Maplewood.
And you are a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey?
Architect.
Architect.
My license attorney.
Yeah, that's me, that's my lieutenant, right? Licensed architect in the state of, how long have you been licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Twenty some years. Before that, New York, I was registered in 89.
And what schools have you attended in connection with your work?
Boston Architectural College in Boston, earned an architecture degree.
And you testified before the plan of course?
I did a resume before that for another degree.
Well, accept your word as an expert.
Thank you very much. Expert in the field of architecture, thank you, not as an attorney. Mr. Figdor, would you describe the existing condition and use of the property?
The existing, when we found it, the house, parts of it were about to collapse, without exaggeration. There was no foundation in the back section of the house, and along parts of the perimeter, not just the rear one-story, but the perimeter along that, and also staircases were like from a horror show. But anyway, we fixed it up, so I think it's really coming along now. I'm very happy with what Ray's doing. It's really a good thing because it's an existing three-family. He's not chopping it up, he's keeping it as a three-family, so I think it's very irresponsible. The parking situation, I don't know if there's something new. A typical parking space, as you know, is nine by 18, nine people. So, what we did was we created three separate lanes for the cars to enter and exit without having to go around each other. We did look at options for other parking, and this seemed to be the most straightforward. We looked at diagonal parking, we looked at parallel parking, and this avoided a lot of those issues with coming in and out. The 27-foot width accommodates three cars, and then it goes down to 18 feet for the other two that continue. The 27, it's just where it straightens out along the house to create a little extra space for maneuvering. But then, it channels back down to the original width of the curb cut.
And now, just to clarify, the maximum width of this driveway is 29 feet x y's?
Yes, that's the way it's pointed. We know it's allowed to be 16. That's cutting it tight even for just two rows of cars anyway.
So, moving into the variances that are requested in connection, we designed the driveway the best we could, but we still require variance relief. So, which two bulk variances are we requesting in connection with this application?
Well, the five-foot side yard setback, that would not work with three cars, because it would be basically one car really going all the way back.
And currently, the condition on the property is significantly less than a five-foot setback right now, the existing driveway, correct?
Yes, and the other one is the 20, well, the 16-foot width, we want to get wider so we get three cars.
So, if these variances are granted, this application is granted, but the board, do you foresee problems or negative consequences that would result from this change?
I think it's a positive change.
So, nothing negative that you would see?
No.
No? I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Any board members have a question? Nope. Anybody in the audience have a question?
Brief summation, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Anybody in the audience have a comment at this time?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you've heard, this application for the board seeks preliminary and final major site plan approval with associated bulk variance relief in order to demolish an existing two-car garage that is in poor shape at the rear of the property, and to expand and extend the existing driveway to permit three separate parking lanes, which will benefit the tenants as well as neighboring property owners, as less cars will have to be parked on the street. You've heard from property owner Raymond Schaefer about the improvements he's made to the property already and the benefits of what he's seeking to do. You've also heard from architect William Figdor regarding his design of the driveway, why he designed it in that manner, and the variances being sought in connection with this application. Based on testimony, exhibits presented to the board, I expect the asset forward from this application. Okay.
Well, I just want to make a quick comment. You know, I'm not a fan of parking right on the property line, but being this is a pre-existing three-family house, I think that this plan improves the parking situation for everybody, maybe takes some cars off the street and bring relief even to the neighbors. So, I think it's making a, you know, good situation out of it. And if nobody has any more questions, does anybody want to make a motion to approve this application?
I'd like to.
Second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bold.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Warne.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
And Mr. Ganyan.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Up next, we have PB 2912, 588 and 590-594 Washington Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for key performance, Michael Paramali, will affirm again, Gashon McMacko, Block 24, Union Avenue in Bellville. Now, here for the board on behalf of John Notti as sole member of property owning entity 588 Washington Avenue LLC. This application had previously been scheduled to be heard by this board at its October 10th, 2019 meeting, but has been adjourned twice to the current meeting. In the intervening time, an interesting situation occurred whereby the property applicant, prior applicant, RUC Holdings LLC, who was the contract purchaser to purchase this property, terminated that agreement. So, at this point in time, RUC Holdings has since agreed to authorize the property owner, 588 Washington Avenue LLC, to essentially substitute in as applicant. He provided the board secretary, Ms. Corin Di Angelo, a form signed by Martin Kelly as the principal of RUC Holdings to permit this substitution. Also, during the intervening time, between the original October 10th hearing date, revised plans were prepared and submitted by our project architect, Mark Stefanelli. You should have those plans before you. These plans were revised in order to eliminate several bulk variances, which had been requested in the prior application, the initial application, the initial submission, and they've also been revised to provide a more aesthetically appealing facade to the Washington Avenue street frontage. So, I'm here tonight, with that being said, and that history, that tortured history of this application, I have applicant John Notti here seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval along with associated bulk variances in order to develop 588 Washington Avenue, otherwise known as block 9001, lots 29 and 30, as a four-story mixed-use building with one ground floor commercial unit and 20 residential dwelling units. Five of those would be two families, 15 would be one-family units. Subject property is located in the BG Commercial Residential Mixed Use Zone, and the use proposed tonight is permitted in the zone. I intend to call three witnesses in support of this application. First, Mr. John Notti will testify as property owner and now applicant. Then, Mark Stefanelli as architect will testify regarding his design of the site and the revisions which have been made to the plans. Lastly, our engineer, Brian Cortino, will describe the current site conditions and the site improvements proposed from an engineering perspective. So, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. John Notti.
Please. We shall raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
No.
State your name and spell your last name.
John Notti, N-O-T-T-E. I'm sorry, I'll slow down.
No, it's okay.
Mr. Notti, are you the owner of property at 588 Washington Avenue in Bellville? Yes, I am. And how long have you owned the property? Eight years. I understand that previous applicant, RUC Holdings LLC, was under contract to purchase the property from you, is that correct? That is correct. But that contract is no longer in effect? Correct. And RUC Holdings has agreed to allow property owner entity owned by yourself to substitute into the application as applicant? Yes, they have. Have you had any other potential buyers interested in the property during the time that you've owned it? No. So, one more question with regard to the property. To the best of your knowledge, are there any environmental issues related to this property that you are aware of? No. I have no further questions. Mr. Notti.
Okay. Anybody in the board have a question? Anybody in the public have a question? Proceed.
My next witness, project architect, Mark Stefanelli.
Please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your, spell both names, please.
Okay, my name is Mark Stefanelli, Mark with a K, Stefanelli, S-T-E-F-A-N-E-L-L-I.
Thank you.
Stefanelli, what is your business address?
I'm an architect in New Jersey, and my business address is 375 Murray Hill Parkway in East Rutherford, 07073.
And how long have you been practicing in the field of architecture?
I've been practicing architecture for about 25 years and been in my own business for about 15 years.
And what schools have you attended in connection with your work?
NJIT Bachelor of Architecture.
And you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And have you testified before between zone and planning boards?
Yes, I have.
Accepted as an expert on this stage?
Yes, I have.
Well, accept your word as an expert.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stefanelli, did you prepare the plans for the proposed site?
Yes, I did.
Would you describe the existing condition and use of the property today?
Yes, may I present my...
Of course.
I believe the board has the picture board from my presentation. No, this is a picture board representing the neighborhood and the surrounding area and the site itself.
Want to mark it, can you say it?
Yeah, mark it, I know.
A1 or?
Yes.
She said A1.
A1.
Great.
Okay, the site is on the corner of Graylock Avenue and Washington Avenue. It's a corner lot. Right now, it's a vacant lot with a small building that's between three and four family residences. The Washington Avenue area that it is located in, the site is surrounded by multifamilies ranging from two-family houses all the way up to about 40 or 48 apartments down on the right-hand side. The difficult part about developing this particular site is that the Graylock Avenue slopes down dramatically. On the left-hand side, slopes down probably somewhere between 10 and 12 feet from the curve all the way down to the bottom of the site. And at the back of the site, it's very heavily wooded with trees and overgrown shrubbery. There are some additional trees up on the upper portion of the site that will be cleared out. This building will be demolished. It's an old building that's in need of repair, it's vacant, and we'll be cleaning out this front, top portion of the site for our new building. It's a flag-shaped lot. It's a flag-shaped lot, and our building will primarily be on the upper square portion of the lot. This area slopes down towards the railroad tracks, and yet, it's heavily wooded and primarily Across from the lower part of the site, there is Railroad Place, which has access to an industrial building with a parking area. The retail areas in our Walgreens right across the street, and we have the motorcycle mall right down the block. The corner itself has a bus stop on both corners, so there's a bus stop directly adjacent to the property.
Would you describe the post-development, starting with the board plan through the ground floor?
Sure.
Now, this is a colorized version of the plan that was already submitted to the board. Correct. So, which plan sheet is this?
This is sheet two, which illustrates the ground floor, second floor, third floor, fourth floor, detail of the apartments, and a breakdown of the buildings.
A2, colorized sheet two. Mr. Stefanelli, would you describe the proposed building, starting with the ground floor and working your way down?
Sure. Okay, so the ground floor comprised of 27 parking spots, a retail space of about 1,637 square feet, a lobby entrance that is accessible from Washington Avenue. Once the Washington Avenue lobby entrance will come in, there is access to an elevator and a fire-related staircase, and also a staircase back down to the parking area. The retail store wraps the corner, and it's fronted with storefront on both, on the front side, and some high windows on the left side. There's a total of 27 parking spaces. There's actually 19 parking slots, and there are 14 tandem spots, so 19 slots and 14 tandem spots that can be shared. The access to the parking garage is on the left-hand side. There's a small ramp 20 feet wide with a 20-foot-wide overhead garage door to gain access to the parking area. Near the elevator, we have our handicap spot, and there is a 12-foot-wide loading area that can be used for the handicap spot and also give access to the elevator and staircase of the main lot. As you come up the building, the building itself is a mixed-use building. It has 20 residential units over the one retail. Out of those 20 units, there are 15 one-bedroom units and five two-bedroom units. I have illustrated on my board, I just color-coded it so you can see it a little bit better. I have unit A, unit B, and unit C. Unit A in the yellow is a one-bedroom unit consisting of a kitchen, living room, bedroom, and two baths with an area for washer dryer. And as you can see on the first floor, you have 1, 2, 3, 4 on the first floor, 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3, 4 on the second floor, 1, 2, 3, 4 on the... I'm sorry, on the third floor and on the fourth floor. The green unit is the typical two-bedroom unit, which has living room, kitchen area, two bedrooms and two baths, walk-in closet, and an area for a washer dryer. And as you can see, Unit B, there are none on the second floor. There are three on the third floor and two on the fourth floor. The orange unit is an alternate Unit C, which is a one-bedroom unit, which has a dining room. So it has living room, kitchen, dining room, bedroom for tenants that would like a dining room, dining area. And as you can see on the second floor, there are two C units on the second floor and one C unit on the fourth floor. On the second floor, when you come up the elevator off to the front corner addressing Washington and Graylock, there is a community room. This community room is approximately 1,104 square feet. The community room has a balcony area that looks onto Washington Avenue at 435 square feet, so there's an exterior element to that room. The community room has enough room in it for a kitchen area, kitchenette area for refrigerator and sink, an accessible bathroom, and also included an area for an optional gym if needed. It's a very small gym, but it does the job. In other words, it's a small area where the tenants can work out one or two people at a time that can house a home gym, a stress mat, and a treadmill, so that can be incorporated into the community room. The retail space on the lower level also has a little kitchen area, has a utility closet, has an accessible bathroom, and has a rear access door to the parking area. On the ground floor, on the right-hand side, we have our trash and recycle storage areas. We have a recycling area in the front, a trash area adjacent, and then adjacent to that would be the meter room for any, you know, PSCNG or electric heaters on the right-hand side. The trash room is actually accessible from the lobby hallway, and the hallways on the second and third, on the second, third, and fourth floor plan. There will be a trash chute off the hallway in each... In each hallway, there'll be a trash chute that will go down into that trash room on the ground floor, so tenants can bring their garbage down to that room. So we have, like I said, five one-bedroom units, which is in the 20%...
Five twos.
I'm sorry, five two-bedroom units and 15 one-bedroom units, which is 20% required.
Great. Would you describe the proposed exterior of the property and also would you discuss the revisions that were made along the way with regard to the layout, removing variance relief, and also to the exterior?
Yes, now, if I may, I'd like to kind of recap.
Of course. Please do.
Well, first, I want to thank the board for their input on this project. I think we have an exciting project for Delver in this redevelopment zone. And I just want to recap where we started. At first, when we started developing this building, we had a very simple design, very simple design with a flat facade, and we incorporated horizontal siding, very simple sides with a difference of materials, storefront, and porch just at the main area of the community room. After comments from the board, which we definitely appreciate, we've revised this. We've incorporated many elements to make it look a lot better and to try and give the board what they want. So we have a new design for you.
Not to interrupt, but could we just want that A3? That's a good...
This will be A3?
Correct. Building elevation from Washington Street?
This is a... And I actually have two other renderings also.
What's the name while we're at it?
So it would be A3, 4, and 5, maybe, or X?
Describe the 22 board in turn.
All right, first, I'll go over A3, which is an illustration of our new design, taking into comments, taking into consideration the comments from the board.
From the corner of Washington and Graylock.
From the corner of Washington and Graylock Avenue. So some of the changes that we made that are not directly on the plans you're looking at, because as you develop this rendering, things... As you develop it, I noticed that there's different things we can do. So one thing that we could do to improve the look of the building is we wrap the front porch around to the side. So now the exterior area is covered as like an elevator. This is kind of like a little balcony on the side, and there's an area here. This area can be used for a barbecue and has adequate space for at least two or three tables and chairs. And then that is accessible to the community room. But the size of the building is broken up into basically three parts, like the redevelopment zone actually requests. It has a base, a middle, and a top. The base is a stone base that wraps around the front. And the middle is basically a brick facade, so it's got stone at the bottom, brick in the middle with storefront that is addressing Washington Avenue. The upper portion of the building is going to be... We've incorporated one-foot bump outs that we didn't have on our first rendering. So these one-foot bump outs add interest to the side. It creates an interesting element. The gray area that you see would be a stucco finish with a series of stucco panels, and the brown area would be a wood grain finish, different wood grain planks. We also incorporated floor-to-ceiling windows along the lobby area, bringing more light into the lobby and giving it more of a commercial and a modern look. We also, another small change we did was we recessed the lobby entrance just about 30 inches, just to get a little coverage on your way into the apartments and also to eliminate any doors swinging over the sidewalk, but that was a good idea. One of the comments from the review was that we had an open garage area. So we incorporated a brick wall here with large openings with a metal grill to give it the appearance of a residential facade, but these are just openings that air can flow in, light and air can get into the parking garage. Along the Graylock side, we also have landscaping stepping down the hill. Now, if I give you A4, that would be... Let's see, I guess we'll go to the front here. This is A4, and it's an illustration, a rendering illustration of a straight-on...
Front view of the building?
From Washington Avenue. From Washington Avenue. And again, we eliminated the blue color. We thought that was more, the blue and white was too much of like, more like a shore look. So we tried to get more of colors that were more earthy for like an urban setting or more of like a streetscape like such that Delver has. So here, you can see the brick base, the storefront going all the way across, the recessed front entrance, big 588 number, lobby area with the large windows, and the in-and-out bump outs that create interest along the side, and then the covered porch area. If you look at this one here, I guess this would be A5. This is a view down the hill. So I told you that the Graylock Avenue slopes down pretty dramatically. So we're going to actually use that in this particular aspect to our advantage. We have four additional parking spaces down at the bottom of the hill that we can create a double garage. So this is the main entrance to the main garage with the openings, and then a little bit further down, there are two additional garages for four additional spaces, and that would be built underneath the parking area. Due to the slope, it's not such a big deal because this would have either had to been cut away or filled, so we can use that space. We're going to build a retaining wall here to the wooded area, and we can use that space for underground parking right in this area, so four spots. There would be a hallway, once you get in this garage area, there'll be a hallway that connects you directly to the stair tower. And as you can see, we have different bump outs. We incorporated this last bump out because we thought the four looked a lot better. The porch wrapped around, and we kept the stone. We altered the stone so we have a little more grit. Trying to give the board what they want. I think that's a pretty good...
Great description.
Second.
Would you describe the proposed lighting for a second?
Yes, we can do lighting. Can you do the engine? Because it's really, it's on Brian's planet, so the lighting is pretty much an engineering.
That's fine. Would you take a moment to go over the variances being requested in connection with this application, while they're necessary? I'd like to go through them one at a time if that's acceptable.
Can you kind of cue me on that?
Absolutely, sure. So first, we're requesting a SEER bulk variance for a required loading space, where one loading space is required for the building. We are not providing loading space per se, but I understand there's a loading area.
Correct. Like I said, the loading area is adjacent to the handicap spot, which is a 9x18 spot. There is a 12x25 loading area between the handicap spot and the elevator and the stair tower. So this area would be for handicap loading and any, you know, small deliveries to the store. Maybe tenants can use it to bring up small pieces of furniture. I mean, you do have direct access from Washington Avenue, but this would be an area where somebody could pull in for five minutes, unload their car, and then go out.
Great. We're also requesting a SEER bulk variance for a minimum required parking stall size, where parking stalls in Delver are required to be 9 by 19 feet, and we're providing some stalls which are 9 by 18 feet.
Correct. So we have all 9 by 18 except for these four here, 1, 2, 3, 4. Actually, the handicap spot would be 9 by 19. So I have 19 feet on these four, and then I thought it was better to get the double tandem spots at 18 and 18, at 18 on this side and 18 on this side. We have a little bit more backup. So because this is an enclosed space, it's a little bit harder to maneuver, I thought the extra two feet would be beneficial in the backup and the pulling in. I think it would be better utilized because of the situation to give the extra two feet to the backup area.
Now, if we needed to comply with 9 by 19, we could still comply with the 25 foot...
We do have 27 foot seven, so if I need to take out two feet to get to 25, we could do that if that pleases the board. Like I said, I just thought it was better to give a little more backup space.
I agree. We're requesting a SEER bulk variance for a minimum commercial ground floor ceiling height, where a minimum ceiling height of 14 feet is required, and we'll provide a ground floor ceiling height of 10 feet. Would you describe why that, if that's necessary?
Yes, I think this drawing kind of illustrates my opinion on this. So, you know, I talked to my builder and I talked to mechanical engineers, and 10 feet seems to be enough for mechanical equipment and lighting. The reason I didn't want to go 14 feet in the front was because of the heavy slope down to the back. An additional four feet in the front may not mean anything, but then I would be additional four feet in the back, we'd be over 60 feet in the back. So I thought it was better to keep the front at 10 feet, to keep the back down as low as possible so it doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood, and that was my thought.
Lastly, we're requesting a SEER bulk variance for side street frontage, which is not wrapped by a permitted use. Why are we not complying with that regulation?
Okay, so we have the retail store in the front. There's storefront from left to right. We have small windows. This is the store. We need to get into the building, so we need parking. We need access to the parking garage. Obviously, this area here is not really suitable for any retail or business because it's kind of down the hill. This is essentially a dead end. So we needed this area for access to the parking, so that's why we did it. We kept the retail in the front across Washington Avenue, where it's mostly going to be seen and used. And this back area, we felt was, first of all, it's necessary to have for access, and it's not a primary spot for retail.
In addition to those four variances that we've just discussed, several additional variances were listed in the original letter of denial as necessary. I'd like to take a minute to go over those variances and discuss how we've eliminated the need for those variances in the course of the revisions which have been made to the plans.
Okay.
So a SEER bulk variance was indicated for minimum residential ceiling height, where the minimum ceiling height was listed as eight feet. We actually provide nine feet, is that correct? And nine feet is what is required.
That is correct. On the elevation sheet that you have in front of you, sheet three, you can see on the right-hand side, the left-side elevation, we have 10 feet first floor, nine, nine, and nine, so there was no variance for that. It's a nine-foot ceiling.
An additional variance was noted for minimum indoor shared amenity space and minimum outdoor terrace space, and we revised the plans to provide that space, correct?
Correct.
I know you discussed it briefly in the direct...
Right, so... So the community room, minimum required 20 units times 10 square feet per unit is 200 square feet. We're well over that, we're over 1,000 square feet at 1,104. The balcony area, I forget the calculation, but we are at 435, so that meets the...
Correct, it was 12 square feet per unit times 20 units, 240 required.
We meet both.
We provide 435. There was a SEER bulk variance indicated for minimum indoor shared amenity features. So in the club room, how do we satisfy that? Provided a kitchen, is provided...
Correct. So in our community room, we have a small area for a kitchen. We have our bathroom, and then, like I said, I have a little layout for a small 10 by 10 room, good for one or two people. It's not a big gym, I'm not saying it is, but it is a spot where someone can go down there, stretch out, run on the treadmill, maybe work out.
We have a bulk variance also indicated for minimum shared outdoor terrace space and amenity features, where at minimum barbecue facilities, fire pit, outdoor tables and chairs, if necessary. Have we met that?
Yeah, you can see on the rendering. We actually put it in on the rendering. There's a little barbecue area right here, and then there's... You can't really see it, but there's room for two tables and two chairs and a couple of chairs.
Lastly, there was a variance indicated in the letter of denial for maximum ratio of two-bedroom units to one-bedroom unit. Now we comply with that as well, correct? The 25%...
That is correct. That is correct.
I have no further questions, let's split it.
How is the tandem parking going to work?
Okay, so we have four units, we have 19 slots. The two-bedroom units, we would designate a tandem spot. So a two-bedroom unit would have an extra spot. So we do have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 slots that are double parking, and we have five two-bedroom units. So we would have, each two-bedroom unit would actually get the tandem spot.
There's five two-bedrooms, but there's seven tandem spots?
Correct. So there's room there for, if a two-bedroom has two cars per se, plus a wife or whatever the case may be, that the owner could designate an additional spot for that person.
Well, you'd have to, right? You'd have to designate so you wouldn't run into a problem with assigned parking. That's the tandem spots for two bedrooms, right?
Tandem spot.
Correct.
Would have to be assigned for it.
Correct.
And your one-bedroom suite, I mean, that looks like a two-bedroom, it's like you're just going to a one-bedroom minus a closet.
Well, we created a dining room in that area.
If you call that a two-bedroom, does the building comply or... Will it comply or...
No, you might want to address that, but no, we altered the plan. I mean, it's just a different layout. I mean, it's a one-bedroom... This is when I got married, I had a dining room set. So if you have a dining room set, you, you know, you have an area for a dining room, a den, or maybe a home office. I'm an architect, I like to work at night. So you might have a home office, a den, a dining room.
Yeah, I could understand somebody would want to have extra room, but you've got to see where we're coming to. That's easy to make a bedroom, too, whether it's legal or illegal. The only thing I'm asking, if you did call that a two-bedroom apartment, does the building still comply?
No, we are, no, the green, the green...
Yeah, I get it.
That would put us over the 25%. Now, you can address that.
Mr. Stefanelli, were any other design options looked at for that particular space?
Yes. Again, we have this room for a dining room. If the board really, you know, has a problem with the dining room, which, I don't know...
Slash den, which we...
Yes, I mean, there is something we can do, that we could slide those back and over and have a bigger bedroom in that room. But, yeah, I think it's just a, I think it's just a good option for a one-bedroom unit to have an additional space. No closet in it, double doors for, you know, some kind of elegant dining room or a private room, so.
Just to clarify, the decision was made to go with this layout because we think, who you think, and the applicant believes, that this is the most beneficial and would probably be the most desirable that this is most beneficial and would probably be the most desirable to potential tenants.
Yes.
But for the board to determine that this particular layout is not advantageous or preferable, other layouts have been reviewed which would involve expanding the bedrooms to be a little bit larger, including a closet, putting a walk-in, expanding the bathroom per se, and eliminating that dining room.
It could be done. This is our preferable floor plan.
Any other board members have a question?
I, I have a question. Where you're going to come into the load, the loading dock, if you will. Is that a driveway on the right side of the building yours or where would the cars or trucks park to off-load stop? Would it be right on Washington Avenue?
So there's two options for loading. And again, we're not talking to be trucks. We're talking maybe a van.
And, and I'm only, and I'm only raising the question because if it's going to be in Washington Avenue, like I think someone said, that is a bus stop. So there's a coordination piece to add. So that's, that's where I was just going with that.
So it's a good question. So we do have the, the side ramp. And if somebody needed to get to the elevator or the stair for the retail space, there is a space accommodated for whatever, a ten-minute pickup or a ten-minute drop-off, which is a larger than a parking space, twelve by twenty-five. So that's that area right there next to the stair, the elevator and the.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I just didn't have to come through, you know, maybe get buzzed in or whatever.
And like I said, with the coordination, when you have that transportation and the bus, you really don't want to have
Right, I get.
traffic stopped or people not be able to get on the bus or off the bus. I don't know the remedy for that.
Well, we do have, you know, I don't know the exact, I mean, there, actually, if you look at the pictures, there's actually a curb pipe right here which would go away. It's kind of a misplaced curb pipe within ten feet of the crosswalk. I don't know how it ever worked, but that would be filled in, so that would repair that curb. So you do have some area, you know, away from the corner to park.
Anybody in the audience have a question, please? Mr. Frank Antoni?
Yes, Mr. Frank Antoni. Mr. Stefano, I have some attention towards the board having this apartment, B and C, the two bedrooms. They're both eleven hundred and fifty-six square feet, correct? And I see you've got on the second floor, you have two C units?
Yes.
All right, and then you have two B units on the third floor and you have one of each on the fourth floor.
Correct.
All right, so maybe to solve this problem, if you were to put a B and a C unit on each floor and make the B unit, the two-bedroom, bigger, more square foot, maybe go to thirteen hundred square feet, and make the C unit, the one-bedroom, smaller, because you're, they're both the same thing. And on the contract, it's forty-seven years. That's an easy conversion to a bedroom. It's all about one wall and popping the door to get into the bedroom. And you've got a two-bedroom apartment out of it. And I've seen it too many times in my years of business. So that way, you would have combination, one of each, one, two-bedroom, one. Make the two-bedroom bigger, maybe thirteen, and make the other one smaller. And that one-bedroom, nine hundred square feet, you redesign it in such a way, I'm sure you could do it, because number one, I like your plan and I'm glad you didn't go to five stories. So I'm sure you're able to do it. Design it smaller, maybe a nine hundred square foot, one-bedroom unit. Designed so it'd be impossible to create the second bedroom. You think you're capable of doing that?
Definitely capable of doing it. The, the question is, you know, we're, we're providing a, a one-bedroom unit that has the option for the dining room and the den. I don't know what value that puts on it. I mean, you know, what's the, I mean, here's what I, I need to kind of get out. So we, we've worked on this plan a lot since our first presentation here. And I'm trying to create a balance between what the board wants and what is financially feasible for the builder. The developer, you know, if I can speak for the developer, that he needs to be able to, number one, afford this building and number two, have, have enough income to sustain the building. So if the building is not, you know, financially desirable, then he's not going to put in the money to, to build the building. So we're trying to make, I, I mean, and I don't know the numbers, but I don't know if, by certainly by moving that over, creating a one-bedroom, you may not get, you know, you might have a, a additional income or additional rent for a more spacious one-bedroom, which may be in the marketplace. So I'm trying to create a balance between, you know, what is needed and what the, the developer can do and be financially responsible to the developer. Certainly, that's something we can look at. If you do do one and two, yeah, you can slide this over ten feet, make this a smaller unit. There may be some issues with the stair and the access, so I'd have to look at that. It may not be as easy as you think. But, um, yeah, I just thought this was the, the better plan to just give a one-bedroom that had a little more space in it. Now, if the doors were a problem, we could take the doors off and have a, a larger living room. We could also slide to make this a nice master bedroom, if we could. Because that's also another amenity. A, a young couple coming in with a, a larger master bedroom and two closets might be more profitable than a small nine hundred square foot apartment.
Well, and don't take any offense, but the C unit, a one-bedroom, that's not a really good design. I mean, you want a dining room next to the kitchen. You don't want to be carrying food all through the apartment. So you've got the kitchen down here and you've got the dining room up in the other corner. That's, in my opinion, that's, that's not a good idea. It's not good design, rather. So again, I'm an activist and former commissioner. I go to town meetings and I tell them all the time. I work all around this town. We've got tons of illegal apartments. So I don't want to create a situation where it's easy to have a couple more illegal apartments. So if you could design that, ask the board, if you could ask them to redesign it that we don't have a future.
Yeah, just can you clarify, what were you saying about the master bedroom, making the bedroom a little bigger?
Yes, please. So we have three units that are designated as C units.
Right.
The other plan that was looked at, we looked at different options for this, was also to enlarge that master bedroom, provide a closet to the master bedroom, enlarge that bathroom, basically encompass that space which is designated as dining room slash den. If the board is, again, it's the applicant's preference to have the C unit the way it is set up. Reason being is, we believe it would be easier to rent more beneficial to potential tenants. But we've also got a separate opportunity. Let's make this, let's call it A six. Let's mark one as A six.
The bedroom right now has a walk-in closet in it, doesn't it?
Mr. Stefano, we'll hand this to the board and we'll explain this.
This is just another option because I know.
Just let them get it out there before we start explaining what we're, we're proposing. As an alternate design to the C units, which again are three units.
You have an extra copy, Frank?
Yes.
I want to Mr. Frank Antoni. That's the alternate, alternate to the C.
Mr. Stefano, would you explain the alternate design for the units, the three units that are listed as C on these.
Right, so again, this design would, would cater to a, a couple that would want a slightly larger master bedroom and slightly more closet space. Still maintains the two bathrooms, slightly larger bedroom, a very large walk-in closet, which is pretty important nowadays. And still maintains a very large living room, dining room, living, uh, living room, dining room area at the front. So this was just another option, no?
Well, I don't know how the board feels. Personally, I, I mean, I prefer this. This looks, our concern is, you know, we want the developer or builder, whoever, to make money, but the parking's a concern. You get two, two bedrooms in there, you're going to more people, more cars, you don't have adequate parking. And I, you know, personally, I'll see how everybody else feels, but I prefer this, this, this option.
I agree with the chairman. It's a better layout.
We absolutely appreciate the concern of the board. That's.
You guys.
But I could just answer something else.
Sure.
Mr. Stefano, you mentioned it may be a problem with the stairs, but those two units on all floors are in the back of the building. They're nowhere near the staircase.
No, but when you were saying slide this.
This wall. Yeah, I'm not talking about.
You want to slide this over.
Right. This front wall would stay the same, got no effect on entering the apartment at all. You just make that, you got the, what do you got, twenty-three hundred square feet?
It, it just, it just, yeah, it, it.
Somebody a, a bigger two-bedroom apartment, thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred and fifty, and nine hundred square foot, one bedroom.
Could we, can we keep that in as a, as an option for?
Well, I think the board is, the board is.
If you like this one.
This example. I think it's probably easier for you guys to, you know, from a cost-wise, I, I think this is, makes everybody happy.
Okay. Glad, glad to meet you. Why I'm here.
Does anybody else in the public have questions?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven, Platte Street, Detroit. As a question, let me get out my usual rhetoric. I again object on going record by saying that the planning board continues to operate illegally by having township employees serve as a class four member. Mr. Cates, Michael Cates Esquire has ruled in on this matter saying that the board is operating illegally. I know, Mr. Beato.
I'm just going to tell you, you know, my usual rhetoric is you should take it to mayor and council. They're the ones that.
Well, they, they, it's, it's a circular, circular logic. They rely on your opinion.
And you have my opinion letter. And so now we're doing an application, so please direct your questions that are related to this after the.
I want the record reflected. Nothing has changed since February.
That's correct. Now let's move on.
I just want to say that I share the concerns of the planning board, in particular, Mr. Banaro and Mr. Bo, about the C unit. While the composition of this structure has not been listed as five two-bedroom units and fifteen one-bedroom units, with those C units, we know what's going to happen in reality. They're going to be converted to two-bedroom units. So that means that the effective breakdown of this project is going to be eight two-bedroom units and twelve one-bedroom units. And if I have the calculations correct, under the new zoning ordinance, it says two-bedroom apartments require two spaces and one-bedroom units require one-bedroom space. So you're going to need, you're going to need a total of twenty-eight parking spaces in reality. And I think the developer said, the architect said that there's only nineteen provided. So you're, you're, this is why, this is a contrivance of putting this.
I think it's one, one, one space per unit.
Two, I thought it's, it's the new zoning issue, you need one parking space. Mr. Banda can confirm this because Mr. Banda is, is very knowledgeable in this particular rule.
It says right here to BG zone, one space per unit.
Right, that's what you're saying.
That's a new, new book. Yeah, that's, that's what we're reading right here, Mike.
One space, even if it's a two-bedroom unit, you only need one parking space?
Yeah, that's in the RAB, RA, one RB, RC, where it goes into the bedroom.
Because I, I remember having a discussion with Mr. Banda just a couple of months ago where they were going to require any units marked as dens to also have additional, require an additional parking space.
We're working on the.
Yeah, that didn't happen yet. They're looking to amend that.
I just want, I, I want to express my concern, thinking back on what Mr. Frank Antoni said, what Mr. Banaro and Mr. Bo said. I think you need to, to do something to eliminate these C units, whatever.
Did you look at the, do you want to take a visual?
No, I didn't see the, the copy.
Can you pass it?
Look at it, Mr. Sheldon.
This is our option to eliminate that.
Thank you.
I think this is another solution and eliminates the, the conversion to a two-bedroom.
I understand the concern that developer wants to make as much money as possible, but, you know, those of us who live in Belleville have to deal with the consequences of structures like this. And you, you put in effectively eight two-bedroom units. Again, I have to always, you know, go on record by saying, well, I'm a trustee for the Belleville Board of Ed. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board as a private concerned citizen, but I'm ever cognizant about the impact structures like this will have on our school system. And two-bedroom units almost invariably produce one or more children in our school system. So any additional two-bedroom units are going to be a burden on, on the school system for this reason. Anything you can do to limit the two-bedroom units to a reasonable number would be greatly appreciated.
I think this, this solves that. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Anybody else in the public? Mr.?
Victor Mafushi. Did you say there were garbage chutes?
Yes. Trash chute?
Yes. What do you do about recycling?
This, this chute can have two separate, to go down to, there's a, there's a room down here. And there's a, this recycling trash room can be one big room or it can be two separate rooms and the chute can go down to this particular room. And there will be a gentleman to take it out. There'll be somebody that will be in charge of that, maintaining that area on garbage day. I mean, none of the tenants will be responsible for that, so he would be responsible for the sorting and, and the delivery to the curb.
Also, garbage pickup is, could be what? Cans brought out to the street?
Uh. Oh, it's going to be a private, a private company that's going to come with a trucking unit. So that the containers will be handled by a private garbage removal company.
Anybody else in the public? Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll wait for our next witness and hear Brian Shortino.
I do.
Speak your name and tell your last name.
First name is Brian. Last name is Shortino. S-H-O-R-T-I-N-O.
Brian with an I?
Yes, with an I.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shortino, what is your business address for the record?
I'm employed by Burton Engineering Associates. The address is sixty-six Glen Avenue, Glen Rock, New Jersey, zero seven four five two.
And how long have you been practicing in the field of engineering?
I'm involved in the field of engineering for, let's see, thirty-eight years.
And what schools have you attended in connection with it?
I have undergraduate degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University and a master's science degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology.
And you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And you testified previously for zoning and planning boards?
Yes, I have.
Excepted as an expert in education?
Yes, I have.
Well, except you were just as an expert in.
Thank you.
Mr. Shortino, did you prepare an engineering site plan for the proposed project?
Yes, we did. Our office prepared the site plan drawings that were submitted in support of the application.
Would you please review the location of the property and the existing site?
Okay, just for a matter of record on the plans, our office prepared a set of site plan drawings. They have a date of August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and it consists of six drawings. I hope you should have them in your possession.
The engineering plans were not revised from the initial submissions of the initial engineering plans that you have or should be this.
That's correct. Okay, the location? Well, your architect previously testified, but the, the subject property is five eighty Washington Avenue. It's known as block nine zero zero one, lots twenty-nine and thirty. And it contains seventeen thousand five hundred seventeen square feet.
And not to go over what Mr. Stefano already stated, so let's just discuss the topography of the site and the problems that caused in connection with the development of the site.
Yeah, it says mentioned by Mr. Stefano, you know, the, the site along Washington Avenue is at grade. But then Graylock, Graylock Avenue in the direction from west to east drops in topography. And actually, the street grade along Graylock Avenue, along that side front edge of the property is approximately twenty-foot grade. But with respect to the application and what we're proposing, it's essentially a ten-foot grade change from Washington Avenue to where we're putting the rear, the easterly side of the retaining wall and parking structure. of the retainable and parking structure.
Would you describe the existing drainage on the site?
Currently, well, the site has the, um, the site has the existing dwelling, excuse me, existing two-story building in the front towards Washington Avenue, and then it's separated to a one-story dwelling, excuse me, building to the rear of that two-story structure. The remainder of the site is kind of broken asphalt, but essentially, it's all surface runoff, there's no drainage structures on site, and it's running towards the rear of the property, or the easterly portion of the site.
And if this application is approved, what type of drainage improvements would be made? How would the drainage system operate?
Okay, just to reference, um, I'd like to just put on the, uh, on the easel the, what we call a rendered site plan, or, excuse me, the landscape rendering plan.
So that has not been submitted, let's, let's mark that A seven. It's gonna be A seven, landscape rendering?
Yes.
Totalized landscape rendering?
Yes, again, it's, it's entitled landscape rendering, has a date of October tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you very much.
So, just what this plan does, is essentially the landscape plan and the site plan, a little bit larger scale, so it's easier to read, and we've indicated colors, which in that is normally associated with the type of, uh, uh, structure or material composition. So, as indicated, the site is located on Washington Avenue, Graylock Avenue, the gray areas are essentially concrete, so we have a large sidewalk area along Washington Avenue, going in the west-east direction along Graylock Avenue will be new sidewalk. And there's also sidewalk on the southerly side, which access the, as previously mentioned by the architect, access the, um, the trash area, uh, and the, excuse me, the trash area, and the, um, meter roof, and. Oh, the recycling, okay. The recycling, okay, so there's a roof there. So the question was with respect to.
To new drainage improvements, how do we intend to accomplish the stormwater retention on the new site?
So what we're proposing with the four-story structure we have, um, in this, in, in this rendering, the four-story structure is indicated with the brown type color. The white color is actually the parking area, which is underneath the, the structure, but that portion, which is white, is exposed to, um, the sky. So, uh, probably two-thirds of the parking area is covered by the building, and approximately a third of the parking area is open to the sky. But, uh, what we have proposed for the site is a series of two dry wells at the, um, the easterly portion of the site within the parking area, and what that does is, the roof runoff from the dwelling, excuse me, the roof runoff from the building, and the, um, surface runoff from the exposed parking area is captured in the, by the inlet grates of the two dry walls, and the stormwater is allowed to percolate into the ground.
Great. Would you describe the proposed lighting for the site?
The lighting for the site, um, we have a specific lighting plan. Essentially, um, there's not, I'll, I'll say not, there's no major area light like you would have in a shopping center or McDonald's or something of that nature. We have a lot of, um, surface mounted wall lights, um, we have, we have a specific lighting plan on drawing, two-point-four, but essentially, we have three decorative lights at the garage entrance along Graylock Avenue, um, and then we have wall lights along the recycle, clean area, trash area, and the, um, meter area. And there's also, um, essentially wall sponges, we have fourteen of those, but they're essentially along the front along Washington Avenue, there's some along the, um, rear of the property that gives some light to the exposed parking area, and the rest of the lighting is really canopy lights. There's, um, underneath the, the lighted parking area, there's four canopy lights located on the, the surface, uh, or the surface of the ceiling, and the parking area is lighted in it. But essentially, um, there's, there is, um, some lights that goes along Washington Avenue, and that's done intentionally to, to give some, some light for safety reasons along the sidewalk for pedestrians, and then there's exterior lights along the southerly side to light the park, excuse me, light the walkway areas to access the trash and recyclable areas and every room. And also, there's another entrance, um, to the parking area at the, that easterly side. So the, the light is essentially minimal, and, and it's just servicing, um, safe maneuverability for the parking areas of the cars and the, um, users of the facility, and also pedestrians public along, uh, Washington Avenue.
Thank you. Uh, would you describe the proposed vehicular ingress and egress, and specifically with regard to the turning radius issue?
Yes, we have, um, on our plan, we have the two-way driveway to access the, um, the parking area, which is covered along Graylock Avenue. It's, it's, um, the driveway width is twenty-one, okay, yes, twenty feet wide, the driveway width is twenty feet wide, which would access two-way vehicular traffic. With respect to the turning movements, um, vehicle, vehicular movements can be made, right turn in, they're all safe maneuverabilities. We actually did a, um, exhibit indicating the movements, but this is something that's not in the package that the board had before then, but we created it just for tonight's hearing.
Clarence, I'm sorry to interrupt again, can we mark it A eight? So the A eight is a turning radius diagram?
So this is a vehicle turning exhibit, it has a date of October tenth, two thousand and nineteen. What this shows is, um, typically the four movements you would see on a two-way driveway, which also has a two-way street. So it's the right turn in, um, and then continuing right into the parking area, right turn in, and the, coming left to, into, to the lower level parking area. And then if you were traveling westward on Graylock Avenue, would be a left turn in, and, and then right to the parking, access the parking area, and a left turn in and access, and turning left to access the easterly portion of the parking area. So we have safe vehicular, uh, uh, um, safe vehicular access for, um, the motor vehicles that would be, that will be using this site.
I'd like to take a minute to go over the review letter, which was prepared by Bellevue Planning Board Engineer, Mr. Tom Steritsky, about October fourth, two thousand and nineteen. There's a few items I'd like you to address within that letter.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll call them out for you. At page two of three, paragraph one and two, uh, the letter requests proposed use of the commercial space to be indicated, proposed hours of operation, number of employees. Do you have any idea who we're proposing for a tenant?
No, at this time, we don't know, the, the proposed tenant is unknown, so we, we don't have that information.
But it will be a permitted use, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Page two of three, in paragraph five, uh, letter requests information with regard to how the stormwater system will operate. I think we covered that in your draft.
Yes, as we mentioned, it's, it's being provided by the C P P system.
Uh, page three of three, paragraph six, uh, I think this is just clarification, drywall callouts on the plan indicate a rim elevation of eighty-five feet and inverts of eighty-two feet, but drywall detail shows a depth of ten feet. Would you be able to clarify?
Yeah, it's just a matter of clarification, the inward elevation of eighty-two feet, that's the, that's inward of the pipe that would be coming in to the drywall system from the roof grates. The drywall does have a, an additional six to eight feet of storage, which allows the water to accumulate and percolate into the ground.
So moving on, page three of three, paragraph seven, uh, requires sign and seal structural plan, plans, I'm sorry, and calculations for the proposed retaining walls. Do you agree that those will be provided?
Yes, those are, those are necessary, and that would be provided. That would be, and what the, um, what the review is, is referencing, is that, uh, the area along the parking area, um, which is exposed to the sky, is, is gonna have retainables protecting intent fee highs, so you need structural calculation and design, uh, to be properly designed for, um, to safely hold up and support the parking structure.
And we certainly agree that we will provide that.
Yes.
Lastly, page three of three, paragraph eight, house side shields to be provided to mitigate off-site light spillage. Are we gonna address possible light spillage off the property?
We have no problem with doing that, again, we, we've indicated some, most of the lighting is exterior lighting, um, along the, the building facade. If deemed necessary, you know, we can put side shields on the, on those light, uh, those lights, so there's no off-site spillage onto adjacent properties. The only place we would like not to do that is obviously along, uh, the public sidewalks, that's where it's desirable to have light, uh, within the sidewalk areas. But, uh, we have no problem putting shields on this, that would be the southerly side, so there's no light spillage onto adjacent property.
That's tremendous a question.
Is, is there any plan for security cameras in this building at all, in public areas, parking, or on the exterior of the building?
Yeah, absolutely, the F K would be certainly willing to install security cameras twenty-four hours, day, seven, easy.
Anybody on the board have a member of this witness? Anybody in the public have a question? Mr. Frantantoni?
I've just got one question, that's, it looks like our plan is a flag lot?
Uh, the existing property, yes, is a flag lot.
All right, wooded proposal, that long, narrow park.
Uh, as far as our plans, there's, there's no proposal to do any type of development in that area.
It's gonna stay wooded?
It would stay in its natural state, as, as far as our plans have indicated.
Anybody else in the public have a question? Mr. Chairman, just want, just for the boards underneath your exposed parking, there's two more, there's two tandem spaces, correct?
Yes, that's, yes. Our plans do not, as, as indicated by Mr. Stefanoelli, um, there's twenty-seven spaces. Our plans do not reflect twenty-seven, seven spa, uh, spaces. Our plans only reflect twenty-three spaces. We still need to revise our plans to put the additional four tandem spaces, that would be going, um, more or less in that easterly portion, as indicated on Mr. Stefanoelli's , uh, plan.
He showed, he showed that.
Yeah, I know he showed it, I just, I just wanted to, I was just acknowledging, I was just acknowledging that our plan doesn't show it, so it does need to be revised. These, those are the spaces that were being referenced, uh, which are not shown on our plan, uh, but we need to revise them and include them in our plan, because it does include, uh, four additional spaces. So that, uh, that needs to be done.
Anybody else, questions? Does anybody have a comment in the public? Mr. Frantantoni?
Yes, I, um, certain, like I said earlier, I'm glad she did only four stories instead of five, since the late nineteen seventy-eight, I've been, uh, I have no fun with retail apartments, but three stories for our township, I think would be more, uh, common and keep our character of our township. But, uh, I'll set it, take a four, if it gets built. All our five and eight and six-story units that have been approved for ten, twelve years never get built. And, um, I, I've got the S D architect, I hope this isn't a light wood construction. But the other thing is, the, um, I'm still concerned about the bedrooms. This revised, the alternancy plan, actually, if you look at it, and I'm looking at it as a contractor, much easier to make a two-bedroom out of it. I don't know if it was inadvertent, but if you had that plan, there's a dotted line running here. The other way to convert the original C apartment requires some plumbing work and all. This requires nothing, a couple studs, some sheet rock, and a door, and you got the second bedroom with its own bathroom.
Well, these, these are apartments, so, I mean, they're, I don't see, the builders aren't gonna go in there and do something you don't have plans for.
Uh, I don't know if you're aware, all the, it's come before the zoning board many times. People have converted their houses to it, they got there waiting for years, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, then when something triggers it, then the building inspector doesn't find out all these illegal apartments. So they had to come for, uh, you know, and, and what's the term?
These are all gonna be inspected by our, our town inspectors, and I can't see the builder going back after the inspection and put walls on there.
Really?
Really.
Well, I'll tell you right across three from me, they sold the house three years ago.
I can see a house, that I agree with you, I can see a house. I can't see a twenty-unit building.
Nine thirty at night, three weeks after, in fact, they didn't even sell it, they rented it, but nine thirty at night, night and dark, down the side entrance, when the studs and the sheet rock and all, and they're living there now.
Mr. Frantantoni?
Now, I told the building inspector, I know, because of privacy issues, you can't just barge in them, but I see it, they got sit, two trucks, four cars, the one next door, go look at one twenty-eight Mike, Mike Street, you know who Mike Street is, one twenty-eight Mount Proctor, they've got a big, uh, bagger, they're ripping out the bacon, one.
I agree with you. I just can't see that happening here.
But there's a simple matter, why are we gonna allow a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom, both to be eleven hundred and fifty-six square feet? Now, it's, just make the two-bedroom, well, like on that plan, a little bigger, and make the other one. But this alternate plan is the easiest one, it's nineteen foot, four inches or something, like ten foot, that's a hell of a bed, a bedroom. And you have to do nothing, because you got a closet and a bathroom built into it. That dotted line is the wall. What do you mean, you need twenty studs and about six pieces of sheet rock? And you've got a two.
I disagree with you.
Are you looking at the plans?
I can see a homeowner doing it, I can't see, I can't see this happening on a twenty-unit project. Somebody going in and converting the unit after they're approved, I, I just, I don't agree with you.
Well, maybe you, if you have the ability, I don't know if you have, maybe you ought to go check the dens at Esther Park. Okay? And you know what's happening there. There's so many people living there.
These are apartments.
They're parking in the golf course.
I agree with you there too, I agree with the project.
Every night, twenty, thirty cars in the golf course parking lot, because they've converted to some of them. I was called one about six years ago, I was called to one of them, who wanted me to convert them. I just, I don't do this kind of work. Again, I don't wanna get caught doing it. But you guys, many of them converted over there, I mean, and I can't talk about the customer I work for, but I see so many illegal units, it turns my back.
I agree with you, there's illegal units, I can't see this multi-unit building like this, I can't see that.
Well, we're not asking for a big deal, we're just making.
I think this satisfies.
Make the two-bedroom bigger, make the one-bedroom smaller.
All right.
This, this is the easiest way to convert it to a two-bedroom.
We agree to disagree.
The bedrooms on, the bedrooms on the backing unit, a wall, one door, boom. And that, you even have the dining room next to the kitchen, a dining room, a combination, you know, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Sheldon?
Um, just want to add one comment, just to quantify what Mr. Frantantoni just said about the extent of illegal apartments in the township. This past September, Board of Education, Dr. Tomko, required re-registration of all the district students. You want to take a guess how many students failed to re-register, because it turns out they were, for the most part, living in illegal apartments. It was over four hundred, over four hundred students, and now you're just dealing with a subset of the township's overall population. We have about forty-five hundred students in the school system, so if you extrapolate that four hundred illegal students for, for just the Board of Education's probably three to four times that townwide, so you probably are dealing with easily between a thousand to two thousand illegal apartments in this township, which are obvious to anyone who walks around, you see the multiple mailbox, the multiple meters with the house listed as a one or two-family, but a lot of these students were also living in apartment buildings, which had been illegally converted. Landlords could not give the parents the proper certification, because they knew they were in violation of the law, they would be cutting their own throats. So please, don't, don't dismiss or minimize what Mr. Frantantoni is telling you from all of his years of direct experience. This town has a major, major problem with illegal dwellings, and nobody really seems to care about it. The town council, previous and current, have given lip service to the idea of cracking down this problem, but nothing ever gets done. And I just don't want you to, to inadvertently aid and abet this problem, that's why I'm hoping you do something to eliminate those C apartments, and make sure that this structure remains five two-bedroom units, and doesn't quickly become eight or more.
Well, surely, whatever, whatever does get built will be inspected, and will be up to whatever was approved.
Inspected, but how often? As Mr. Frantantoni said, it's usually only when a sale takes place, it could be twenty, thirty, forty years.
In my experience in this town, I can't see anybody in an apartment building going in there and putting other apartments, I, I can't.
It does happen, I guess I just.
My getting a tenant that goes in too, they gotta get it inspected, so he changes hands on a tenant.
Right, well, that's usually, I understand, is how you detect these things, but just the, the Board of Education experienced this past September, over four hundred students could not re-register because they were living in illegal dwellings.
That's good, the Board of Education has some extra money, that's good to know.
Well, no, it doesn't, and you know how quickly those funds get exhausted. We're putting a new field at Clermont Field, so.
Yes, you're doing some good work.
That's only gonna cost us three million dollars.
Thank you. Uh, we'll close. Uh, we'll close the public portion at this time, if you'd like to have a summation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just a few quick words and summation. Uh, as you heard, the application for the board seeks preliminary and final major site plan approval with associated boat bearings relief, in order to demolish an existing residential dwelling, uh, three or four family and a vacant, and convert a vacant lot to a four-story mixed-use building with a commercial ground floor space and twenty residential dwelling units. Five of those will be two-bedroom units and fifteen will be one-bedroom units. And we've heard some testimony and some concerns of the public and concerns of the board with regard to apartment layout C. It is certainly not the intent of the developer in any way to create a situation whereby an apartment would be illegally converted in any way, um, so I just want to say that on the record. But we do believe we have solved that problem to some degree at least, and gone certainly away towards eliminating the concern of the board. We've heard from the property owner and our extra witnesses with regard to the difficulty in designing an appropriate building and parking area for this lot due to the topography, which slopes significantly from the front of the property to the rear. Uh, this is also a corner lot, so it presents some unique difficulties. Our property owner's owned this for about eight years. Uh, it's been a difficult property to market and it's a difficult property to develop, and we finally got some experts that did a great job and designed a great building, which I believe will represent the beginning of a redevelopment in this area of Washington Avenue in Belville. With regard to some possible conditions based upon, uh, the comments of the board, uh, I believe we would accept a condition whereby the tandem parking spaces will be assigned, uh, to individual units, to eliminate the possibility of there being problems with the tandem parking spaces. Uh, in addition, uh, also apartment layout for Plan C, uh, we would agree for that to be revised pursuant to exhibit A six that we provided. And also with regard to your concern, Mr. Chairman, uh, the applicant would agree to install security cameras in all public areas of the building. So with that, based on the testimony exhibits presented for the board, I strongly believe that this is a good application and a good development proposal for Belville, uh, that the appropriate proofs have been presented to justify the granting of the variances at issue, the minor variances at issue. I respectfully ask that the board approve this application. Again, thank the board for its time of consideration.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion for the approval of this application with the, um, conditions that were just stated? Please call a roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yeah.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes.
Mr. Lammy.
Yes.
Mr. Zandier.
Yes.
And Rico.
Yes.
And Mr. Diamond.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.